Good evening. I'd like to call this Wednesday, November 10th, meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. Please rise to the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Pe'op tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Pe'op tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. Would General Counsel please call a roll?
Yes, good evening. President Cobb.
Here.
Director Liang.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
Director Strozier.
Here.
We have a quorum, and we also have student representatives present. Taysha Watson.
Here.
And is it Paris Quinn? Nope, we have Shadra Bonica. How did I do? Shidra. Shidra Bonica, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I am moved to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. 6.1, recognition of the Purchasing Department receiving the 2021 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award.
Thank you. Good evening, President Cobb and members of the board. In 1995, the National Procurement Institute established a program designed to recognize organizational excellence in public procurement, and the achievement of excellence in procurement is awarded annually. This prestigious industry award is earned by those organizations that demonstrate excellence by obtaining a high score based on innovation, professionalism, productivity, e-procurement, and leadership attributes of the procurement organization. The National Procurement Institute awarded Tacoma Public Schools, our purchasing department, with the 2021 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award, and this is the 11th consecutive year the department has earned this award. And it's important to note that our purchasing department is only one of two agencies in Washington and only one of 23 institutions of education in the United States and Canada to receive this award. This is a notable achievement for the team now led by Director of Procurement Contracts and Compliance, Mary Kate Richardson, and Assistant Director, Cherie Estrada. Over the last 19 months, I can attest to the professionalism of this team, which was tasked with researching and buying a whole host of new products necessary for our district to operate safely during the pandemic. And the purchasing marketplace was competitive and chaotic. But the team came through for our staff and students time and again. This also is an award with real tangible benefits for Tacoma Public Schools. Through the innovations that they've put in place in our purchasing department, they have saved millions of dollars in taxpayer funding over the last several years. So it has brought positive public attention to our organization as effective stewards of public funds. Please help me congratulate the purchasing team, Cherie Estrada, who will speak, and bring her team forward.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank my team for all their effort and hard work that they put in, not only during the regular school year to make purchases and ensure that we can get to yes for our students and continue the business, but just the hard work that they put in and the continuous improvement of earning this award. It's not about the award itself, but about the process and the journey through the award. It's made us grow over the last 11 years. I've had the privilege of being a part of that. And just instituting the different processes and change that we've brought forth to Tacoma has just been a wonderful time. So this is Lori Adams, a lead buyer in technology. And then I have Jessica Bucking-Ham. She is our fixed asset coordinator and assistant buyer. And Shelby Hayward is our assistant buyer, who has been doing all the PPE in the stock. And so I really want to acknowledge her and what she's done in the last 19 months for the district. Thank you.
Were you going to say something, Superintendent Garcia?
I just want to say thank you. What an amazing team. I think Dan articulated some of the features, but competitive is very simple to the complex and very nuanced work that they have to do in order to try to keep all of us well-equipped. And so it takes all of us to help our students and our staff be successful. And I just want to thank you again for all your tremendous work. And their fiduciary responsibility of making sure that we're always getting the best deals where we possibly can, but making sure that the services that are there as fast as we can, it's not lost on any of us. So thank you.
And I just want to echo those thanks. I've seen this award come to the team several times in the past, but it's in this last couple of years, a lot has been asked of your team, like needing to procure things that you never had to before, and quantities that you never had to before, and just the speed that we were asked to try to turn corners and get, I know this isn't just you, but just all the things we've had to buy in the last couple of years and find for our students and things that were just harder to come by. So just the fact that you were able to deliver on all of that and to keep the level of consistency of quality is just thank you on behalf of the board. Thank you. Item 6.2, recognition of Tacoma School Board Director Andrea Cobb for six years of distinguished service to the children of Tacoma.
That was kind of fun though, right? At least for the rest of us. I don't mean to be off agenda item, but that was kind of fun.
President Cobb. We have a very bittersweet recognition to present this evening. Six years ago this month, the voters within Tacoma School District boundaries overwhelmingly elected one of Tacoma's own, Lincoln High School graduate Andrea Cobb, to a six-year term on the school board. Go Abe's. That was more than 61% of the vote. Director Cobb chose not to run for another term, so tonight we have to say a reluctant goodbye along with sharing our gratitude for your six years of distinguished service. Director Cobb, when you first joined the Board of Directors, it marked your first elected public office, but you had already made significant educational contributions leading behind the scenes in the lives of our students and families. For those who might not know or remember, Director Cobb had worked as a project manager for the Tacoma Housing Authority, where she could see the life challenges that many of our students and families face. She worked with students as a college access programs coordinator and admissions counselor at the University of Puget Sound. Director Cobb went back to school to earn a master's in public administration focusing on education policy, and she joined the Washington State Superintendent of Public Instruction's office and eventually became the executive director of the Center for the Improvement of Student Learning. All while serving on the Tacoma School Board, Director Cobb earned a PhD in sociology and transitioned professionally to the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation as a senior program manager. She did not just talk about education, she lived it. Twice during her tenure on the board, Director Cobb served as president, and both years provided their unique leadership challenges. She helped the district navigate through and recover from a labor dispute, and later guided the district through the turmoil of this pandemic. Now, all of you on the dais have brought your own personal and professional experience and expertise and big hearts along with you to this challenging volunteer role. For Director Cobb, that meant bringing her calm demeanor and insightful leadership, informed by her career of serving students and their families, and her own higher education. Now, soon after Director Cobb was elected, we had her on a little show we used to do here at Tacoma Public Schools called School Insider. And on the show, I asked her what motivated her to run for office. And I wondered, was there some significant problem that needed to be fixed or some major wrong that needed to be righted? And here is what she said.
Oh my gosh. This is your life.
It was really kind of the opposite. Just having worked in the community for so long and worked as a staff person at the university, but then as a mentor with local organizations like Palmer Scholars, I had a chance to be connected to lots of efforts in the community to come together and to support kids. So at this election, knowing that there was an open seat, I've just personally been involved in so many great efforts to keep our district moving forward, that it was like, if I don't run, who else is going to? We've got to keep this momentum going. So I ran because I wanted to keep the positive direction that I thought we were headed in moving forward. So it was a good time for me. It was not me coming in trying to undo things or to right wrongs. It was really me wanting to come in and lend my background to the work that's already started and help keep it moving forward.
Well, mission accomplished, Director Cobb. As you depart from this service on the Board of Directors, please know that the momentum you helped continue will have ripple effects that go on for years. Thank you. And to honor you and help you remember your time with us, we have a plaque for you that says, "In grateful appreciation of Andrea Cobb, 2015 to 2021 Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors." And now, while we're all wiping away a little tear and everyone's cheering, I'll bring this up to you.
Thank you. Is anybody else going to speak before me? Because I need a minute. Superintendent Santorino.
I just wanted to say, to make sure, Dan, that was well put together, because he really did hit some good points. But the thing that I was going to start with is we have so benefited from your insight and from your thoughtful processing, and I can't tell you how many times we've held our breath to figure, to know what you're next, what you're thinking. And so I have so admired. You are inextricably connected and invested in our students and our community and our family, and that's made such a difference. We, as a staff, have learned to look at our items and look for injustice and for vocabulary that's inconsistent or redundancy or ambiguity. And we know we're better because of our service with you. And we'll always have a finer eye of looking at things and making sure that we're standing well by our students. I'm also amazed. You never bent under the pressure. You've been through some hard times, and you never showed that, you never got upset. You were strong. You were calm. The definition of grace under pressure, and we really, really appreciate that. Thanks for being willing to take the time and to process and to hold things off. If it wasn't time to make a quick decision, we'll remember that. Thanks for considering everything carefully and asking critical questions and making deliberate decisions, and also being a part of an incredible team. I think together, you guys all just came together to make such a good decisions for our students. I've appreciated your support for me personally. The conversations that we had always made me smarter and to think of different perspectives and think of a different way of looking at things, and I won't forget that. You're gentle, but a very deliberate questioner and critical thinker, and I appreciate that. I am going to miss you so much, but I'm looking forward to the friendship. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
We have a special guest, Madam President, that would like to say a few comments.
Mayor Woodard.
If I may, Madam President. I think this is maybe my second time standing at this podium in my lifetime, I think. But I wouldn't be any other place this evening than here to celebrate you, Andrea. You may remember a little get-together at the house I was living in temporarily after my fire, where we all got together as African-Americans and talked about everybody running for office that year as you had decided to run. And that was an incredible year for this entire community, for Pierce County, of how many African-Americans ran and were elected at the time. But you have been just, you have outlined anything that we thought you would be able to do in that moment, Andrea. Your commitment and your steadiness. In all of these years that you've been on the school board, I don't once remember hearing you yell or say bad words or anything like that. You've just been really dedicated and committed to this work. I've never heard you say you want to give up at moments when I know it was just too hard. But you went through it, and it wasn't just that you got through it, it was how you got through it. So often, when we look at people who do this work, we just look at the fact that they got through things. And getting through something, getting through difficult times is important. But how you get through those difficult times is what inspires others. And this community has been inspired by your leadership. You may not have got on this board to make any sweeping changes or because you didn't like something that was going on, but let's be really clear, and you should know this, that you did make a lot of change. And you didn't make it just by what you said. You made it by what you did and how you did it. We are so incredibly grateful for your leadership here at the school district. Now selfishly, you're going to come to the library board, so I still get to work with you. But it will be a loss for our district, and it will be a loss for this community. But I know that there's a newly elected school board member, or two newly elected school board members, one who's already seated, who will come in and do a really great job and continue to carry on the legacy that you have built. But I just want you to know that we know you and we see you, and we are so grateful for you. And we look forward to continuing to see you rise in leadership in this city now and into the future. So Andrea, just from the bottom of my heart, and on behalf of the 217,000-plus people who call Tacoma home, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'll, Director Liang.
You've got to go loud. A lot has been said already, but I think I'd like to just echo just how analytical and you have been in figuring out a lot of difficult topics. Your experience at OSPI and all the other places we've heard of has allowed you to help all the students and staff in this district a lot. We've heard all about your level-headedness, of course. It's been a difficult, at least three years since I've been here. I don't know how the three years before that were. There was always issues. I know how they were as a parent. You helped me get me oriented when I came on, so I appreciate that a lot. And your experience as a student and then as a parent of students was very valuable. So now you get to have your own gavel for home to slap around at the tables at your house. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have something from Vice President Baumright, who was very, very sad she couldn't be here tonight to honor you. So I'm just going to read what she wrote. "Over the past two years on the school board, I have been part of a consistent and constant, part of consistent and constant dialogues about the Galt property..." Oh, wait, sorry. Wrong piece of paper. Whoops. Sorry. I had too many pieces of paper. Let's start that again. "Andrea, I wish that I could be there in person tonight to celebrate and honor the vast and impactful contributions you have made over the past six years serving on the Tacoma School Board. In your quiet, knowledgeable, persistent manner, you have effectively moved minds and hearts in the advancement of equitable educational opportunities for all our students and in support and enrichment of our dedicated Tacoma Public School staff. In addition, your data and policy acumen has provided..." I hope I said that word right. Sorry, Elizabeth. "...has provided both guidance and accountability to our board work. Personally, I've enjoyed your wit, wisdom, and passion for Tacoma Public Schools, especially Lincoln High School. Go Abe's! And I have appreciated your kind mentoring to help me learn the ropes and rise to be the best board director I can be. For all these reasons and so many more, you will be sorely missed. All my best in your future endeavors, Elizabeth."
Thank you.
And I would just add, there's lots been said. You are one of the sole inspirations for me to want to be on this board and serve in the similar capacity and capability and honor and grace that you serve in. And I'm deeply grateful for your leadership and friendship.
Thank you.
I'm going to jump on and just say, as I shared earlier this morning with one of my colleagues, most folks are blessed with sight, but not everybody is blessed with vision. And I just want to make sure that you understand how thankful we are for your commitment to our young people. Six years is a long time. I mean, I'll be honest with you, feels like my one year has been six years. But it's been a true honor to serve alongside you. And as I mentioned before, because of your work and because of your example, I am a better school board director. So in the short time we've had together, just know I appreciate you, and you can't get away because we do have your phone number. So thank you for all that you have done.
Thank you.
Madam President, I told you this would not be a long fanfare, so I will try to be quick. Thank you. Your gentle relentless pressure is both inspiring and powerful. It has not been easy work. You have been accused, you have been criticized for those that do not know you and your spirit and your soul. You are a beacon of equity and excellence that shines bright for our students and our community, and you remain a symbol of hope and persistence, and I am grateful for you. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. I didn't write anything down. Corbett encouraged me to, but I did not write anything down. I probably should have, but it just didn't really feel like it was actually... I mean, it feels like it's ending because it's been six years, but I didn't feel like it was quite ending. But first, I just want to thank my family for being here, my mom, my sister, my husband, my niece. They were here when it started, and here they are in the end. And I know that you've watched a few meetings online. You've sent me messages to tell me what's going on at school. So throughout this time, I've really appreciated all of you for just generally supporting me. Do have to correct the record on one thing. I have not finished a dissertation, so this PhD is on my list of things to do in my free Thursday nights in the next couple of years. So hopefully, if I come back to you again, I'll just let you all know, give you the notice that it's done. So I hope to finish that soon. I think when people say, I've heard, you know, we've all heard people say, "It's been my privilege to serve." Like, it always, to me, sounded good, but never really had meaning until I got here. And it really has been my privilege to serve. Like, you grow up in this community, you have roots here, you want to see every student have access to opportunities you had or that you didn't have. And to be in a position where we could ask the questions, where we can ask that someone pursue the partnership or that we can just do it differently is just truly a privilege. I think it's really always easy to remember the hard things. If I look back on my six years, that interview with Dan stood out because that was like one of the very first things. But in addition to that, before I was even official, I got to go to the first graduation rate announcement ceremony. It was at Gray. It was my first time being in the new Gray. And Carla was announcing the rate and standing up on that stage. It was overwhelming. It's like, what have I gotten myself into? But then shortly after that, I got my first crazy call, and it was Carla telling me that we had to lock down schools because someone in the east side had a missile on their roof. And I was like, what have I gotten myself into? So through the years, there have been a lot of moments that stand out as emergencies or crises, but there have also been really good things, like being at the new Macarver Elementary School and seeing that library for the first time and all the other new schools that opened along the way. Being in a position, a rare position, to debate whether or not to change the names of schools that have been problematic. Figuring out like how to navigate the measles, and like, there's just been so many things that I couldn't have expected, couldn't have predicted, but have, in different ways, pushed me to think about solutions rather than just wallowing in the problem. To see the team lead through these things has also been really impactful for me. Like, even as this year began, I was like, oh, it's just going to be rolling quarantines, and like, kids are going to miss so much. But then to hear the team say, "We're already thinking about how to figure out whether or not kids can be accessible to the classroom that's happening." Like, people are problem-solving all the time around you, so being a part of this team has helped me lean more into that mindset of figuring out the options rather than just recognizing that there's a problem. So I really appreciate that. And then I do too, I've just had the privilege of serving with some incredible people. Those of you who are sitting up here included among them. When I started, I was a newbie. Everyone was veteran at that point. Director Heinz, Scott, and Detective Y'all were already in their fourth year of service, and pretty quickly, they were running for their second term. So I came in as a newbie, and I'm leaving as the longest-serving member only six years later. So it's been a privilege to get to work with you all, to get to know you all, and to get to really, especially in the last couple of years, feel like we were committed to teamwork. So I just want to thank you all for giving me the privilege of those experiences. And just thank the rest of the team too for just your consistency and your commitment to being better every day for kids. We are not perfect. None of us up here ever claim to be. But I do feel like through the years, we just keep getting better and better, and I appreciate being a part of it. I will miss you all. I will not watch you all for a while. I'll be there with you in spirit, but just thank you for the time and for pouring into me in the same way that you let me share my strengths with you all too. So with that, we will move on to the superintendent's report. Item 7.1, whole educator recognition.
Thank you. I'm going to have Dr. Forrest Creek join us. We started a little, a new pattern for us, which is to highlight some of our amazing team members. This is the month of November, and it is the season of being thankful. And many of us have had chances to be in buildings on a daily basis throughout the weeks, and we see these amazing folks. And before Forrest goes deep in with our custodial staff, I want to take a moment to thank our entire team. Seeing our kids get off the buses with smiles on their face starts with our bus drivers. Our paraeducators, when we're working with them on a daily basis, they're there for our kids. They're for our support staff. Our safety and security teams work relentlessly to try to be responsive to, not only the needs that are happening in the schools, but our community. Our teachers are doing a phenomenal job under very difficult conditions. And that includes our office paraffin rationals, our operations team, our admin teams, our prof techs, our custodial teams, our exempt employees, our families, and our students. As someone that gets a chance to be in buildings, and I know Superintendent Santorino and other cabinet members and other support staff, it truly is inspiring to see what our teams are doing. And Director, or President Cobb, you mentioned it, we're not perfect. But Tacoma is somewhere special, and it's because of all these folks. And so I just felt a very much a sense of pride to honor each of them. And I know a simple thank you is not enough, but we will continue to say thank you because they have earned it. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to go a little deeper with a very important group that is a part of our team, our custodians. Dr. Creek?
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Garcia and members of the board. I had mentioned to, I think to you last month, roughly 500 employees are served through Tacoma Public Schools. And today, we're recognizing our custodians, one of those groups. And we were served by close to 198 custodians across the school district and all of our buildings. Really, custodians are crucial to the work we do in schools. They keep our learning spaces clean and running smoothly. Each and every building across Tacoma Public Schools is served by a custodian. When the pandemic hit, custodians were the first line of defense to ensure surfaces were sanitized and safe for students and staff. Mr. Tom Chalk, who's a director of facilities, and said this about our custodians. "When COVID hit, our custodial team did not hesitate to ask, 'How can we help?" hesitate to ask, how can we help keep our students' staff and community safe? They responded to every challenge with enthusiasm to make it right. From helping create a safe facility access plan, to cleaning contaminated rooms with our COVID cleaning team, they were and continue to be a key component, component, excuse me, to a school learning at all times. In support of the whole educator, we would like to recognize our custodians for keeping us safe and healthy in our buildings. I've got a couple of slides of members of our custodial team. The first one here is Mr. Donald Weinmarsh. He's at Stewart Middle School. And just to clarify, this picture was taken before COVID. So hence the reason he's not wearing a mask right now, but he wears a mask every day. Our next picture is Kevin Wilcox. Here's him in action and connecting with kids. He's at Lister, part of that Lister team. The next picture, now this is the team at Hunt, Dwayne Cavaness, Daniel Whitezell, and Keith Burnson, getting connected with kids, part of a great team there. Next slide is Sharon Mullins at Wharton Wright, Reggie Fedrang, part of the Building and Grounds Custodial Team. So this is not just our schools, but at PDC, Building and Grounds Facility. And last but not least, Desiree McDonald, who's at Gray. And many of these pictures represent a small group of folks. I think I said before, about 198 different folks that do really an amazing job for Tacoma schools. They keep our buildings safe and healthy and really connect with our kids. They're one of many educators that make an amazing team across the district. I think joining us here today are two folks from that team. I've got Mr. Matt Monet and Jennifer Frazier, if you wouldn't mind standing up. And then one of the supervisors is here as well, Alex Houscheff, who is there to give a shout out as well. Thank you so much. On behalf of Tacoma Public Schools and the whole educator, thank you so much for your work and support of our schools.
Thank you.
Can I just, I just want to echo the thanks and the recognition. Fun fact, not fun fact, but in my time working at OSPI, one of the best projects that I got to work on was advocating for more money for custodians and more custodians. And it was just this recognition that state like nurses in particular does not fund enough custodians. And so I had the opportunity to work with a work group of folks who were in custodial positions or custodial supervision positions across the state. And we just ticked through all the things that custodians do in a building. And I think you can picture the sweeping and the cleaning, the things that come to mind, but all the way down to like raising and lowering the flagpole in a lot of cases. So it was just like, and locking up and checking and just all the stuff, this group of people would just kind of tick through all the different things. And just the relationship building aspect of the role, too. A lot of times, the custodians are the people that students connect with. So I just appreciate the work that you, the role that you all play. And especially in this time of COVID, like when keeping buildings safe and healthy has been a paramount duty of all of us. So I just want to thank you for the role you play. And to let you know, like this, just in keeping with this whole educator acknowledgement, like, we always say, it takes the whole team to get this work done, but it really does. And we acknowledge that. We appreciate the work that you do. And thank you.
So I just want to echo that. And the reason why we put them all under that, we are all educators. It's not uncommon to see Mr. Monet at the school reading with students. It's not uncommon for our custodial team to reach out and help our students and our staff through difficult times and relationships. And so we are better together, and each one of us is an educator. And so thank you for acknowledging that, President Cobb. And it's, we're extremely grateful. So thank you all.
Thanks. That will move on to item number eight, staff reports to the board. There are no reports tonight. Item number nine, members of the public wishing to address the board. And we are still using alternative protocols. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent or designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you can also email the board directly at board@tocoma.k12.wad.us. Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability or COVID accommodations. There are two options to provide public comment, one in person. And we have two people signed up to give comment tonight. The general counsel will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. Please leave your mask on while speaking. You'll have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. And given that we only have two people signed up, you'll each have three minutes to share your comments.
And thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Tasia Watson regarding her experience as a certified nursing assistant in the Next Move CTE internship program.
And I don't think I read it, but you'll have a one-minute warning reminder from the clock up there.
Okay, thank you. Hello, President Cobb and everybody from the board. I'm Tasia Watson. I'm also a student representative for the school board. And I, my first day was two weeks ago. So congratulations. I mean, well, I don't know if it's congratulations, but I know I've only known you, like, met you is my second time meeting you, but I really appreciate what you've done for the school board. I am Tasia Watson. I go to Tacoma School of the Arts, and I'm a senior. And I participated in the first group of the Next Move Nursing Career Launch Program and Career Technical Education Program. So I did a 90-hour Certified Nursing Assistant course and a 40-hour clinical experience at Good Samaritan in Puyallup. And I helped, I pretty much shadowed a Certified Nursing Assistant who worked there. And I got to do things like take the vitals of patients, blood pressure. I fed patients. I assisted them with cleaning. I assisted them with food and feeding. And I did a bunch of tasks that CNAs did. Now, I'm currently taking my exams to become a Certified Nursing Assistant. So I passed my skills exam, and my writing exam is coming up in December, so that I can actually be a Certified Nursing Assistant. And through this program, I got offered or accepted into a paid internship at an assisted living place. So I'll be doing that in the spring. So, sorry, had to remember. This opportunity like really helped me understand the medical field. I got to speak to people. And my favorite thing was the hands-on experience, working with patients one-on-one, and really talking to them. And talking to even like nurses was very like insightful, and I learned a lot about the career. And I am interested in the medical career. I'm not sure if I'm going to pursue it, but I definitely learned a lot about it. And it's very valuable. And I'm getting paid for it now in the spring, which is a great opportunity. I really, I guess that's why, the time I have. So thank you. Oh, I have one more minute. Okay, I'm not sure. Sorry. So I really appreciated this experience. It built my confidence in like my future in general and like the broader idea of what I wanted to do. And I got to do a lot and learn from professionals. And I am grateful for this experience. So that's what I did at the Next Move Nursing Launch Program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Fagan regarding technology in the classroom.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Jennifer Fagan. I actually was there at the missile, at one of the schools that had to be evacuated for the missile thing. So it's funny that you brought that up. I'm a fourth and fifth grade teacher at DeLong Elementary School now. And I would like to share the way that I have been using the one-to-one technology in my classroom. This year has been a lot harder than other years, especially with the missing chunks of information from virtual learning, as well as just the trauma of the whole pandemic. The fact that I teach a fourth and fifth grade class in the same room, I've had to rethink how I teach math. With the way that I do that now, it's not a perfect system. It's definitely still a work in progress. But my students get all of their learning from math through Schoology video lessons that I've created for them. Each student is working on their own computer throughout the math time, which then frees me up for that whole hour to work one-on-one with small groups and really focus in on students' needs at that time. I wrote all of this up, and now I'm like, ooh. At the end of each of their lessons or sessions, they all have exit tickets, and they all, they all end up getting quizzes. All of those then come back to me, and then I'm able to find out which students are needing, needing help versus which ones are not. The ones that are not are able to move ahead in their lessons. They're able to continue forward, continue pushing forward. While the ones that need the extra support, I'm able to then pull aside and work with one-on-one. They're also able to learn at their own pace. Some of the biggest drawbacks that I've had with this is, it is a new way of learning. Kids are having a hard time focusing sometimes. But the benefit to that is that they understand that they're all learning at their own pace. They don't feel like they're being left behind. They don't feel like they're having to overdo or outdo one another. So with all of that, it actually helps to set them up for their future. It's setting them up for their future with technology and understanding that those screens aren't just something to be used as a toy, but also to be used as a tool for learning as well as eventually working one day, since we all use that. So I just wanted to say, to let you guys know what is going on with the technology, the one-to-one technology in the classroom, especially with that levy that's coming up in February. And hopefully that we can get that and keep encouraging that technology use in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And in addition, we have three individuals who submitted written public comment, which has been appended to tonight's agenda. Andrew Paulson regarding keeping SROs in schools. Chanel Marshall representing a group of TPS community members regarding the contract between the Tacoma Police Department and Tacoma Public Schools. And Rachel Dreschel regarding statement against police in Tacoma Public Schools. And those are our speakers for tonight.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number 10, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted. Item 11, policy matters, 11.1, first reading of new policy 3411, accommodating students with seizures.
The district's general counsel recommends the board review the draft of new policy 3411 and provide feedback before a second reading.
Do you mind providing a little background and context on the changes?
Absolutely. And I believe that Shilay Hobbs is also here to provide some additional information. But I'll just let you know that our legislature did enact House Bill HB 1085 during the 2021 legislative session. And the bill was intended to clarify requirements, eliminate confusion, and remove some barriers to supporting students with seizure disorders. There are some specifics in the bill that we have incorporated into this new policy. We don't have a policy for accommodating students with seizures, so this is a new policy. And by adopting this policy, it will keep the district in compliance with this bill and also ensure that we're meeting requirements to serve and keep students with epilepsy or other seizure disorders safe. And I don't know if there's anything else that you'd like to add, Ms. Hobbs?
Thank you, President Cobb and members of the board. I don't have much to add other than it does ensure the appropriate supports and safety measures for our students with a seizure disorder or epilepsy. And it does reiterate the supports we are actively already providing for our students and making sure families are aware of those supports for their students.
Thank you. And so given that this is a first reading, members of the board have an opportunity to review the draft, make comments, ask questions. This policy, just like the others that we've adopted in the last, or changed in the last couple of months, will also go before our equity policy review team for input, and it'll be brought back for a second reading. Any questions or comments at this point? Thank you. Item number 11.2, first reading of revised policy 6220, bid requirements.
The district's general counsel recommends the board review the proposed revised draft of policy 6220 and provide feedback before a second reading.
Do you mind providing context on this one as well?
Sure. This policy is an existing policy, but there have been some state and federal compliance best practices that our purchasing team, that you've heard is so awesome tonight, wants to make sure that we are in compliance. The bid requirements for non-public works contracts that are addressed in here, and then also bid requirements for public works contracts are also addressed. All bid submissions are reviewed and considered by the purchasing department and are awarded while complying with state and federal laws. And policy 6220 has been revised to keep the district in compliance.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number 12, financial report. The district's quarterly report will be presented tonight. The next quarterly report is planned for February of 2022.
Oh, sorry. I apologize. Got excited. I thought I was going to do the financial report, but Ms. Medina will take care of that first.
Thank you. So each November, by policy, we are required to share with you where we ended the prior fiscal, fiscal year. And so I am prepared to do that this evening. We did submit our F196. That's our formal document on where we ended our year, our fiscal year-end to OSPI last week. And so that, that chapter of the year is closed. It's the culmination of quite a bit of anticipation and an exercise that goes through with the team and trying to get that document prepared. So congratulations to them on achieving that. The 2021 fiscal year was one unlike any we've had since my time here. I've been with the district about 14 years. What we experienced with the pandemic left us in a very interesting position from a financial perspective. We had quite a few revenues that were declining because of various pandemic reasons, whether that be enrollment or changes in funding types. And then our expenditures were significantly impacted as well. We didn't have kids in the schools for most of the year, and, or at least different types of students weren't available in the school to claim resources from the state. And so it just made for a very interesting year for us. Our revenues last year were at 96.9% of our budget. So that was about $481 million worth of revenues. And that's actually $15.5 million less than what we had budgeted for and planned. Historically, in the last, I don't know, over a 10-year period, our revenues have been projected at about 99% accuracy to our budget. So this is a huge departure for us and very difficult for us to navigate as we were going through the year, where we might land at year-end. Our expenditures were at 91.8% of our budget, or 461, well, $462 million roughly, which is actually $41 million less than what we had budgeted. So that's a huge increase in the, in the, a huge decrease in expenditures compared to budget. Definitely a decrease in expenditures based on prior year as well. And I think that one of the things that I want to impress upon you as it relates to the reduction in expenditures, is that we were able to claim a lot of our resources through Esser dollars. And so while we had a decline in expenditures, some of the revenues that we were able, that we had lost, we were able to make up in Esser. So it's this weird balance of we have more of this than we usually have, we have less of this than we usually have, we were able to claim these things, which we would never be able to claim. And so it's this perfect mix of, of chaos. I'm going to call it chaos. So where that left us at the end of the year is an 11.7% fund balance. Our fiscal reserve requirement is 5%. And that's $56 million of fund balance that we'll have. That's up $31 million from what we had planned. But we need to keep in mind, when we built our 2122 budget, the budget that we're in for the current year right now, we had planned to use $33 million of that. We had actually had planned for a $60 million holdover from the, from carryover. And we're at 56. So we're down $4 million from what we had planned. So I, I think that that's an important mark for us to recognize that we intended to use 33 million. That required us to have a $60 million fund balance. We only made it to 56. So even though we're carrying over this very large amount of money, we're actually short $4 million from what we budgeted. So that's a little counter, counter, I don't know what the word I'm looking for. I'm sorry. It's against what we normally think. But the importance of our fund balance is still that we will maintain our 5% reserves. So that could mean that we need to make reductions as we're looking through our finances. But when we're talking about enrollment reductions, we still have an enrollment loss for the current year. We do have a lot of vacant positions. We do have a lot of vacant positions that aren't being paid right now, so that'll help to offset some of that $4 million. These are all things that we have to balance out as we're continuing through the, the financial review, as we're, as we continue through financial review for the next, I don't know, year and a half here. So we'll be bringing back to you on, in the December meeting, the first quarter review for 2021, so that we get, 2122, so that we can get a plan forward of what the current implications look like, what we're going to have to do, if there are any actions that are needed. And if we do have actions that are needed, we will have a plan in place to share with you. We did get our levy reserves set, our levy, our levy amounts set. That is going to be the $76 million that we budgeted in the current year. So we don't have a reduction in our levy that we had maybe thought we would. And that's great news, so we'll be able to collect that full amount. And then we're seeing the ESAR revenues come back to us as we claim them. So any expenses that we're seeing, we are able to claim for ESAR, and those are taking place. As to date, we claimed $22 million for ESAR last year. So that's a considerable amount of money that we didn't know that we would have access to until middle of the year. We still have millions of dollars that we can claim for the coming year. We've developed a number of mini plans around those ESAR dollars, and those are all in line with the activities that we had intended to, that we had shared previously with the board. So those mini activities are all currently being planned for. We're working out purchasing plans for them, doing RFPs with the purchasing department where that's required, and ensuring that we're compliant with all federal procurement requirements. When we look at our revenue and expenditure history from the actuals over about a 10, a seven-year period, we can see that the expenditures were considerably down compared to prior years and that revenues were up. Again, that's really based on the fact that we were able to claim for those ESAR dollars. Had it not been for the ESAR dollars, our revenues would have been in line, more in line with our expenditures. And when we look at the other funds, we have just a couple of things that are off from what I would expect to see. First, the associated student body revenues were considerably down, which is not to be, which is to be expected based on the fact that we weren't having student activities and a lot of clubs and activities that we would charge for. In addition to that, I think that we'll continue to see some disruption in what revenues look like in that category due to House Bill 1660, which changes the way that we're able to collect revenues for associated student body activities. So I think that that will look different for a number of years until we find a way to normalize and figure out how we're going to handle the change in that policy. The second item that I think is somewhat unusual is in the debt service expenditures of $48 million. We brought in revenues of $60 million. Typically, you'd see that the revenues and the expenditures are more in line in that debt service category. But if you recall, in November of 2020, we sold bonds. And so that, and we refunded bonds at the same time. And so that refunding was, we had planned to have expenditures that when we refunded, we refinanced, we didn't actually have to have, similar to how, when you refinance your home, you might miss a payment in there for a month. It's a very similar process to that. And then capital projects. What's unusual about capital projects is when we sold those bonds, we received $500 million, $535 million of revenue. And so that's captured in the revenues there. So that's what I wanted to make sure I shared with you. And then if you have any questions, I'll be happy to help respond to this.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions or comments?
I think my only comment is, as listening to you walk through, like, just the budgeting process and the conversations we had around relief funds and just, it sort of makes my head spin a little bit. So I, I know all of us are, but thank you to all of the work that your team has put in to just swim in these really chaotic waters.
Thank you. I would love to call out Courtney Leach as our grants manager, who's really done an amazing job of helping navigate all the rules and requirements around what's expected and what we can charge and what we shouldn't charge and what's required to be reported when we do charge it. So I would just remark about that.
Any other? The one question I have is the source of the $4 million discrepancy from what we planned for to carry over into, plan to carry over and, or any fund balance to spend down in this current budget year. Where did that come from? Is it expenditures that we didn't expect or is it revenues that didn't come through or?
It's both. Yeah. It really is this incredible combination. When we started digging into things, you know, we had, we had fewer revenues in special ed and in nutrition and in transportation and in CTE than we anticipated. And then we had more expenditures that needed to be accrued back into the prior year that we weren't anticipating coming in or weren't going to be, we weren't sure that they would be in on time, and so we hadn't planned for them, and then they ended up coming in. So just, I mean, the, the dance that we do at year-end as to where, because we're a gap district, a generally accepted accounting principles district, we follow a different set of rules than in a lot of other school districts. And so that dance that we do at the end of the year is a lot more challenging because we have to make sure that we account for it according to very strict standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to item number 13, curriculum instruction. 13.1, approval of anatomage tables for career and technical education health sciences
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Director of Career and Technical Education recommends the Board of Directors approve the purchase of six anatomage, I'm not saying I'm saying that right, tables for the career and technical education program in the middle and high schools. Funding source: Career and Technical Education.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 13.1?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Director Keating?
Go ahead.
I was just curious, have, how many tables or how, right, are they, they're tables, right?
Yes.
So just curious how many and if, like, what schools they're going to be going into?
I'm going to ask Terry Harris to come up. I know we're getting six tables, and three are going to the high school and three are going to the middle school. Two of them are from, for Health Careers Academy, at, one at Stadium, one at Mount Tahoma. The other one, I believe, is at Silas High School.
Silas has the pilot one that we bought right before COVID. And the one that's coming would be at Foss High School because they just started a sports medicine program. So is it the three for high school?
And the middle school?
And the middle school, we have a physical fitness and wellness program starting at our new high, our new middle school, Hunt. So the first, or the big table will go there, and we have two traveling tables that will support the other middle schools and feed into the high schools as needed for the projects that they do in this area.
Okay. Director Leon?
Yeah. Thanks for getting these. I think, I wish I would have had them when I was in school, when I was younger, because you do learn a lot from studying the human body when you go into the sciences. Most of us have to do this with real human cadavers, which is very expensive and not easy to do and kind of, it's difficult psychologically for people to work on cadavers. So this is a very good place to, to learn from, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah. Great, great, great start to get at, you know, three high schools, three middle schools. My question would be, are there talks or thoughts about our other schools that do not have these tables?
That's the point of the traveling tables as well. The, the schools that they're supporting have the programs, the sports medicine and the healthcare careers academy. The other schools don't have those programs implemented yet. So yes, in the future, we would love to have them at all our schools.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor of adopting item 13.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 14, business matters. 14.1, approval of inter-local agreement between Stellacum School District and Tacoma Public Schools from November 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
The Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve the inter-local agreement between Stellacum School District and Tacoma Public Schools from November 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Funding source: Student Services.
Is there a motion to adopt item 14.1?
I move to adopt item 14.1.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 14.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted. Item 14.2, approval for inter-local agreement partnership with Metro Parks for Foss High School softball field construction.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the inter-local agreement between Metro Parks, Tacoma, and Tacoma Public Schools for the Foss High School softball field construction.
Is there a motion to adopt item 14.2?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Director Keating?
I have a question. I was reading the map that was attached and trying to figure out if this, it looked like there's already an existing ball field. I was just a little confused as the placement of where this is going to be.
It was expand, extending the current field.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 14.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted. Thank you. Item 15, other business. Approval of contract number TSD-22-045 between the Tacoma Police Department and Tacoma Public Schools.
Yes. The Assistant General Counsel on behalf of the Director of Safety and Security recommends the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-22045 between the Tacoma Police Department and Tacoma Public Schools from November 2021 to August 31, 2022. Funding source: Safety and Security.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.1?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted. Thank you. Item 15.2, adoption of resolution number 2103 to acquire public property adjacent to Lincoln High School for expansion of athletic facilities.
Just to give some background information, we are looking to acquire two parcels from Pierce County. This is a part of our collaboration to extend the sports fields at Lincoln. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution 2103 to acquire public property adjacent to Lincoln High School for expansion of athletic facilities.
Is there a motion to adopt item 15.2?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted. Item 15.3, adoption of resolution 2104 endorsing Tacoma Public Schools propositions 1 and 2 on the February 8th, 2022 ballot.
The Director of Public Information recommends the Board of Directors adopt this resolution endorsing Tacoma Public Schools propositions 1 and 2 on the February 8th, 2022 ballot.
Is there a motion to adopt item 15.3?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, will General Counsel please call a roll?
For the res, adopting resolution 2104, President Cobb?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
Director Stroger?
Aye.
Resolution 2104 passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on then to item number 16, board comments and reports. I'll, I think tonight I'll ask if we can start down with Director Stroger. Any board comments or reports tonight?
No comment. No comment. Thank you.
Director Keating, any comments or reports tonight?
I have a few things. So I wanted, so since the last, I'm going to start with yesterday. Yesterday, I attended the United Way Poverty Summit. Yesterday morning, that was really insightful and I think it's the second one of these that I've attended. And so I just, the amount of effort that United Way, the staff at United Way put into just even being able to have this virtually, I think there were close to 400 participants. And it was, and the keynote speaker, oh my gosh, I just forgot her last name, Heather, the author of some, McGee, author of some of them, Some of Us, who was really just talking about really focusing on the impacts of systematic racism on poverty and how to address it. And it was, it was just a really powerful event, so I was grateful to be a part of that. And then I was also a part of the WASDA General Assembly, which was a two-day event on the 29th and the 30th of October, in where I, this is my second event doing that as a voting delegate. And it was just a really fascinating process to do with, I believe that there were 90%, 97% of all school boards and school districts were represented in legis, General Assembly, which is really substantial. And every year, it continues to grow. And so there were really, it's where we get to participate and pass positions for WASDA to advocate on a state level for schools across, whether that, you know, rural, urban, large, small. So it's just a really fascinating process and also helpful, I think, for me to be reflective of the different, the similarities that all districts face and also some of the real, real significant differences. So that was, I'm grateful to be a part of that. And then I want to give a shout out to the city of Tacoma. So the, our traffic and safety meeting happened today, and there was a publication, a national publication where the Safe Streets team was recognized for the, I'm forgetting what they're called, but there's one at Hilltop Heritage and, but it's like this walkable, what do they call it, a garden circle? I think they called it a garden circle. But anyways, I just, Carrie Wilhelm leads that work at the city, and I just want to give a shout out for that. And then the other thing that I did that I forgot to mention at the last meeting is I attended the GALT Virtual Summit that was, I don't know, sometime in October, towards the end of October. And I was, it was a really significantly attended event, and I think, I don't know if I'm going to get my numbers right, but there was probably close to 75 or so people that participated and the city staff. It was a really, an event where city staff and TPS staff collaborated on helping to be there to be, answer questions about the property, historical context. And City Councilman member Catherine Ushka, who used to serve on the school board, was there as well and who also lives in that neighborhood. And so I think that there, there were, what I just want to share about it is that since, I'm just rounding up to my end of my second year on the, on the board, and I've spent a lot of time talking about GALT. And whether it's within our capacity here on the board with Cabinet or in the community, I'm talking to community members that live around GALT. So it's, I think, a circumstance that has a lot of complexities to it, and I think that I'm really impressed with how the, the city, our, our staff continue to try and find a solution and in a collaborative way to a really complex problem and a complex issue. And that doesn't take away from the impact of living around that property. So it's just, I think, like, we're close to a resolution and moving forward. And so I, I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to find a solution that is really advantageous for everyone and especially those that are living around GALT.
Thank you for your part. Director Leon?
Thanks for talking about the Poverty Summit. I think it's something that we're, as a community, working towards, and I think it takes all aspects of, of the community and society to work on this. We all know that living wage jobs are key to this, and of course, having enough housing, whether it's low-income, middle-income housing is our key things. But the other key thing, of course, is education, right? And that's why we're all doing the work that we do is, is increasing our, our level of positive education and outcomes in kids that come out of here ready to become, to get these fair and good-paying jobs in the community. Sometimes they don't exist in all communities, so that's, that's part of an issue too that we want to work on. Our McKinny Bento kids, they're still need our support and support of our community. So another thing I've been interested in working on and I'm kind of doing a, my own listening session and like, love to get comments in the community on how we can keep kids more engaged in extracurricular activities. We know that the data around kids that are, belong to a team or a club or theater, music, something in their school graduate at something at a rate of 99% compared to kids that aren't. So doesn't mean you have to be, but... compared to kids that aren't. So doesn't mean you have to be, but those kids that are, have the safety net. So I'd love to hear from the community about ways to do this, how we can increase our numbers of staff or other outside folks to become coaches and mentors. Really, this is what their mentors, these people that work as coaches and theaters instructors and music instructors that are outside the hours of school are mentors for our kids. And we need to try to increase those numbers as much as we can to keep kids engaged in all these activities. So if you have thoughts on that, let me know. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't have much additional comment tonight, but I do want to congratulate Director Leon, Director Bonbright, and Director Stroger for their reelections to the board, and to welcome our new board member, Chelsea Miguel Ray. And looking forward to, I said I wasn't going to watch you all, but I'll watch you all. And I also, just on the points, Director Keating, that you were raising about laws and participation, that is significant, like, the participation of 97% of districts. I think a lot of folks who watch our meetings know, and maybe this number has come up before, but there are 295 school districts in the state, but most of them are small. I think it's more than 200 of them have less than 1,000 students. So when we talk about our district and our funding challenges or opportunities and our partner, the number of partnerships we have to make things happen, most of the districts in our state don't even have access to that kind of community support just because they're so small. So it is significant, like, the change, I think, to being able to vote electronically has probably opened up the door for access because it is a big cost burden for people to travel to Olympia to participate in that Legislative Assembly. So that's neat to hear. Yeah. And I, yeah, I think that's, no additional comments tonight. But it's just, again, has been a pleasure serving with all of you.
Madam President, our student rooms.
Oh, yes. Thank you. I meant to do that. Thank you. Got it all in my head. Welcome our student board members. If either of you want to share comments tonight, please make your way to the podium.
Hello. So actually, I'm speaking on behalf of Caitlin. Since she could not attend here, she sent me something that she would like to say. So here is her message. "I am very sad that I cannot be there tonight to celebrate the sendoff of President Cobb's. I have loved being a student representative under her leadership and send her my best wishes. I have been sick for the past five days and have had to miss school. I take five AP classes, so I'm very behind in all of my classes. I think that in a time where, that is emphasized not to come to school when sick, missing school becomes very difficult and stressful. This is because through Schoology, where most assignments are turned in, we are expected to turn everything in on time, even if we are not physically in class. Turning in an assignment is difficult if you haven't properly learned the material. I feel that although we obviously want to encourage good attendance, we want to keep kids safe whether they're quarantining after COVID exposed, exposure, or staying home while sick. And this will be better done if absent students are academically supported." So that's what Caitlin had to say. And then the one comment that I have to say is that, Director Leon, one thing that I think could encourage more students to do extracurricular activities is actually encouraging them to create their own clubs. Because I know that there's very unique interests that bring students together. One club I started this year myself with a friend of mine, Hannah Carlson, is the K-pop dance club, actually, that we started. And it's actually been turning out really well. We have a lot of students joining. So I know that there's, like, traditional clubs that a lot of schools have, but I think that students aren't encouraged enough to start their own. And I think that would bring more people together and make it more interesting for students. So that's what I have to say. And thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Asia. Can I ask you one follow-up question?
Yes, you can.
Do you feel like the path to starting your own club is clear? Did you know how to go about it?
Honestly, I didn't until I was in ASB. And I think, I'm not really sure who, who would be the person, like, which part of the school would be the one to present that more. But because I was an elected official in ASB and I understood the process of club making, that's when I actually understood how easy it was to begin a club. And I don't think a lot of students know that, especially probably not at other schools. So I think that promoting that more to students would probably be beneficial.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody.
And if you have, you have any report, no pressure, but you have the opportunity. Okay. Superintendent Garcia, were you going to say something?
I was just going to give Caitlin a shout out. She was recently named the Stadium Daffodil Princess. And so speedy recovery. And then Caitlin, we'll work with you. And I just want to remind the families too, is, you know, sometimes we put deadlines out there. Our staff is really amazing. So please reach out to your classroom teacher if you need extended time. Schoology is, is technology, and technology has a set date. But we, we have the ability to be adaptive in that way. And I know our staff has been very gracious in that. So please reach out to your classroom teacher if you need extended timelines or your school administrator, and they can, they can work with you during this difficult time.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will move on to item number 17, announcement of next regular board meeting. The next regular board meeting will be December 9th, 2021, at 6:00 PM here at CAB. And with that, we will move to item 18, and we are adjourned.
Thank you all.